This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, now what we will try to understand is, we will try to understand the two points today. One is, vendor creation till vendor payment, one cycle we will run. Second one, customer creation till customer payment. In short, we need to create a vendor and then create the vendor payment. Similarly, we also need to create a customer and create customer payment. Before we do this or before we start this, everybody has got a clarity on vendor creation, customer creation. BP setup, vendor creation, customer creation, basic idea everybody has got now, right? Yes, no, in the previous sessions. Whether you created, not created, it is okay, but you have an idea, right? Okay, to create a vendor, BP is required, to create a customer, BP is required, then create customer role, vendor role. This you have a fair understanding, idea, yes, no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now we will see vendor creation, invoice and then payment. Similarly, customer creation, invoice and then payment, so that everybody will have a fair understanding about, okay, in vendor, this is what is happening, in customer, this is what is happening, then straight away, we will execute different, different scenarios from Wednesday onwards. Wednesday means how many days are left? Two more days. Yes, Monday and Tuesday. And Monday, Tuesday, make sure you will spend sufficient time to understand vendor creation till vendor payment, customer creation till customer payment, one day you keep it for vendor practice, one day you keep it for customer practice. Just to ensure, you are able to understand the process, you are able to understand the flow sequence, that's it. And then we will execute scenarios one by one from Wednesday onwards. Alright, so first one. To do this, what we need to do? So as usual, you need configuration. Everybody did the configuration, right? To create vendor master, whatever is required, everybody did it? Yes, no?
Yes.
Vendor account group, vendor number range, number range assignment, BP grouping, BP number range, customer vendor integration. Similarly, for customer, same thing. Customer account group, customer number range, assignment, BP grouping, BP number range, customer vendor integration, CVA, this everybody has got an understanding. Now what we will do is, first point, we will assume create vendor master. Second one, create a vendor invoice. Third one, create vendor credit memo. Last one, create vendor payment. Are these four points clear?
Once it's not included, yes. Advance, vendor advance.
Advance, we will do it separately. Once this flow is clear, then only we will be able to understand advance. Customer advance, vendor advance, I will make you understand separately. Before we understand that logic, we need to have clarity on this standard process. Then as I said, based on this scenario, we will add different points, again, everything will be repeated, but with different examples, different assignments to you. Okay, now here, if I have to do it for the customer, first what I need to do? By looking at vendor, can you tell me, first point?
First one invoice.
Create customer master, second one, create customer invoice, third one,
Customer.
Create customer credit memo, last one, create customer. Both are similar, right? And when it comes to T code point of view, T code for this?
BP.
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 This is BP, okay. Vendor invoice.
F dash forty three.
F dash forty three.
F dash forty three or?
F dash zero two. FB sixty.
FB sixty, okay, credit memo.
F dash twenty two.
Forty one or?
Eighty six five.
Okay, payment.
F dash fifty three.
Fifty three.
Fifty three, fifty eight. All right, there are three. First, we will do only fifty three. Later on, we will understand what are the others. Same thing, we have to write for the customer. Customer master.
BP.
BP, okay, customer invoice.
F dash twenty two.
F dash twenty two.
Twenty two or?
FB. FB seventy.
FB seventy, okay. Credit memo.
F dash twenty one. No, sorry, twenty seven.
Twenty seven or?
F dash seventy five.
Seventy five.
Seventy five, oh. Okay, alright, customer payment.
F dash twenty eight.
At least, uh, this twenty eight.
F dash twenty eight. Okay. Now, once these T codes are clear, next what we do is, I will not write any values here or I'll put some value here. Let's say, if I create the invoice for eighty thousand. When I am talking about vendor invoice, vendor invoice will show positive balance or negative balance.
Negative balance.
Negative balance.
Negative balance means plus or minus.
Minus. Minus.
Yes, minus means debit balance or credit balance.
Credit balance.
Credit, in short, vendor invoice always shows credit balance. I'll put minus sign, all the numbers we have to strictly put in the number format. Okay, when you have any defect in the invoice, when you have any adjustment in the invoice, we will be processing the credit memo, assuming out of eighty thousand, out of eighty thousand, some ten thousand worth, there is a problem, you returned it, what would be the value for it, if you make any return? Is this ten thousand positive, ten thousand negative?
Positive balance.
It's positive value.
It will be ten thousand positive, because you are adjusting it, right? If your invoice is credit, your adjustment will be debit. If your invoice is debit, adjustment will be credit, because if you buy for eighty thousand, ideally, you need to pay how much?
Thirty thousand.
Seventy.
If you buy for eighty thousand, you need to buy eighty thou- sorry, you need to pay eighty thousand. If you return a ten thousand worth returns, then invoice value eighty thousand minus returns ten thousand, net amount or balance amount, only seventy thousand we need to pay, am I right?
Yes.
Now, we need to process payment of how much?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand, if I put seventy thousand, now the vendor is settled or anything is pending?
Settled.
It is settled.
Settled, if you do a total, it should become zero, is this becoming zero, nil?
Yes.
Yes.
This is becoming zero. Same thing, we will try to do it for customer. What I will do, we will assume, we sold to the customer for eighty thousand. Customer invoice is debit balance or credit balance?
Debit balance.
Debit balance.
Debit balance, meaning eighty thousand positive here? Yes, same thing, I will put number format. If customer made return of ten thousand.
Credit balance.
Negative, negative balance, ten thousand.
It should be negative, because adjustment is opposite sign of your invoice, ten thousand negative. How much are we supposed to do? Sorry, your voice is not clear. Positive, you are receiving, right? Sorry, you are processing debit receiver, yeah.
Total vendor payment she is referring.
Yeah, seventy thousand debit only, not minus seventy. You are looking from the vendor point of view. Debit the receiver, right, vendor is receiving the payment. That. Okay, and when you are receiving the payment from customer, your customer payment will be debit or credit?
Credit.
Debit.
Debit the receiver, credit the giver, who is giving the amount, customer is giving the amount, customer will be credit. Seventy thousand, am I right? If I do a total, it will become zero?
Yes.
Yes.
The reason why we are writing side by side, only at the basic level is to make sure this basic fundamental understanding related confusion, we have to eliminate first. Otherwise, what will happen, even after practicing so many time, still we are all holding this kind of initial confusion, which we should never hold it in our mind. Getting my point, right? This is not any problem, but this is common for most of us, which we need to identify and eliminate from the beginning itself. So that when you are in a project, when you are talking to anybody, basic fundamental mistakes we will never make. Both examples are clear? Including the value?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we will take an example in such a way that vendor name is equal to, you can take any vendor name. Let's say, this is our Apple. I will say, let's say, Pepsi Limited. You can take any name as vendor name, it is okay, I am just taking Pepsi Limited as my vendor name. Similarly, I will take one customer name also. Okay, I'll take Nokia Limited. Clear? During your practice, you can replace any name as customer, any name as vendor, are these two points clear?
Yes.
You can replace any name in place of customer, you can replace any name in place of vendor. After this, we need to first make sure entries are written. Now, entry for vendor invoice. Here, entry for customer invoice. Entry for vendor invoice and then entry for customer invoice. In the vendor invoice, vendor amount is positive or vendor amount is negative.
Negative.
Vendor amount is negative, negative means debit or negative means credit?
Credit.
Negative means credit, in short, vendor will be having a credit balance, meaning in the journal entry, in the accounting entry, vendor will go to credit side. What I will do, in the journal entry, in general, whenever you write manual accounting entry, the sequence will be vendor first or GL first or GL first or vendor first?
Vendor first, in SAP.
In general, or if you leave it, when you write the accounting entry, do we write debit first or credit first?
Debit first.
Just first.
Debit first.
Debit first, so I will put debit, I will put credit, okay? Any accounting entry, we need to understand, debit and credit, is this correct? In the invoice, your vendor value is representing a debit or credit? In the invoice, vendor side, you have listed value, debit or credit, positive, negative?
Positive.
Negative.
This one, look at this one.
Negative.
Look at this.
Did you put?
Positive.
So negative.
Negative value, right? Then vendor will always go to debit, you will put credit vendor, credit who? Vendor, debit is a question mark, leave it, what will be the amount? Eighty thousand, eighty thousand?
Eighty thousand, yes.
Eighty thousand debit, eighty thousand credit, okay, I'm not writing the values, just to make sure when you practice it, when you refer to the recording, I want you to understand, not by looking at everything point to point. Getting my point? I'm not writing value here. Similarly, when I come to customer, what will be the accounting entry for this? Before you write accounting entry, as per the general knowledge, whenever you do any sale to a customer, whenever you create any invoice to the customer, customer side are we writing a positive value or negative value?
Positive value.
Positive value, positive value means debit or credit?
Debit.
Debit, so customer, where I should write in the accounting entry, debit side or credit side?
Debit side.
I will write it on the debit side, here I will put customer. Okay, now, in the first accounting entry, if you look at for vendor, in the accounting entry, vendor is on the credit side, debit side is missing. Now, this debit side, we need to write, whatever we are purchasing, that you need to put as a debit, you should not write purchase account. Whatever you are purchasing, that you need to debit, not the purchase account, so don't write purchase account debit. In the accounting entry, if you put, let's say, purchased debit, vendor credit, it is wrong. If you tell purchase account debit, vendor account credit, it is okay, understood. But when you write the accounting entry, you should never write purchase account, you should never create purchase a GL account, because whenever you are purchasing anything, you are purchasing something, yes or no? It can be physical item, non-physical item, am I correct? Whenever you purchase anything, the item that you purchased can be seen, cannot be seen, am I correct or not?
Yes.
Right, yes, no? For example, I have purchased a mobile phone, can I see the mobile phone, can I touch the mobile phone?
No.
Yes or no, if I purchase a mobile phone?
Yes.
If I buy a mobile phone, I can see the mobile phone, I can touch the mobile phone, is my statement correct?
Yes.
Right, for example, if I order, if I order water, can I touch the mobile phone, can I see the water?
Yes.
Right, for example, let's say, in your office, a laptop is not working and then you got the laptop serviced. Can I touch this service, can I see this service?
No, sir.
No, sir.
I cannot see this service, whatever is done to my laptop, I cannot touch this service that is turned to the laptop, meaning certain purchases, whatever you make, it can be seen, can be touched. Certain purchases that you make, it cannot be seen, cannot be touched, in short, you need to understand here purchases are of two types. Purchase is of two types. One is capital expenditure, second one?
Opex. Operating expenses.
Operating expenses. So, this is basically called as what, capex? And this is called as what?
Opex.
Opex.
Opex, this you must know. The moment you start writing accounting entry, you need to ensure, you are able to categorize your purchase into opex or capex. Capex means BS item, BS item means?
Balance sheet. Balance sheet item.
Balance sheet item. In short, asset. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Opex means?
P and L item.
In short, this is always expense, always expense, now you need to write, you need to understand before writing the accounting entry, let's say, here we are talking about purchases. Purchases from where?
Vendor.
Vendor.
Who is your vendor?
Pepsi.
Pepsi.
Pepsi Limited.
Pepsi Limited, okay, if we are talking about purchases and we are talking about purchases from a vendor and you are talking about your vendor is Pepsi, from Pepsi, what can you purchase? What will be the product if you want to buy from Pepsi?
Beverages.
Beverages.
Any kind of beverage, let's say, you can take a cool drink. Okay, you can take water or you can take any other thing, let's assume that Pepsi, by looking at it, we can say, we are purchasing soft drinks from Pepsi or cool drink from Pepsi. Or let's assume that water from Pepsi. Pepsi also supplies water, am I correct?
Yes, sir, coffee now.
Correct, assuming that Pepsi is also supplying water, anything you can assume it is okay, because I've listed vendor Pepsi, I'm writing something relevant to Pepsi, even when you are writing your accounting entry, make sure blindly you don't debit anything, whatever comes in your mind, don't do it, it's a big mistake. Whatever comes in your mind, you don't write debit, don't write credit, because here the objective is not to write the accounting entry, objective is understanding the accounting entry that you are writing in line with your vendor account. If I say Pepsi, if I put debit, let's say, mobile phone account, is Pepsi selling mobile phone? Can you buy a mobile phone from Pepsi? No, right? Meaning, whatever you are writing, it has to be meaningful, whatever you know, only that one you put as a vendor account. Meaning, after looking at this one, you will have an understanding, okay, if I have to write the accounting entry, first I need to understand what I am purchasing. Accordingly, I will decide who is the supplier, let me decide this will be my vendor, accordingly, you write the entry, accordingly, you start your practice, then even though you do a little practice, you will have crystal clear understanding while talking to somebody, while anybody is explaining anything, you are in a position to understand without deviating from the process. Now, if I am purchasing, let's say, we are purchasing, let's assume that water. We are assuming that we are purchasing from water. If I am purchasing water from Pepsi, now whatever you are purchasing, you need to have a question mark. Is this water purchased for our usage or for sales purpose? Because whenever you buy something, there are two options. Option number one, you buy and then you use it. Option number two, you will buy and you will sell, am I correct?
Yes, sir, yes.
Option number one, I will buy and then I will sell, option number two, I will buy and then I will use it. What is the option, what is the point with I will do with water? Now, our company code is Apple India. Your company is Apple India, in your company, when you buy water from Pepsi, are you selling water to your customers or are you using the water?
Self-consumption for our consumption.
Correct, we are using it for our own consumption, we are utilizing internally the water, meaning this will be charged to balance sheet asset or this will be charged to P and L expense?
P and L. P and L expense.
It should go to P and L expenses. Then accordingly, you need to decide where to give a debit. That is why you should never directly put purchase account here. So here, purchase account will be replaced with water expense?
Water expense.
Or water charges, anything is okay. The objective is, you need to make sure, hold on, think one minute and then decide, okay, whether it is my capex or it is my opex, because in your interview, somebody might put a question, what do you mean by capex, what do you mean by opex? And as we move forward, we will be having certain points like, so far, for any expenses, what are we assigning? Profit center or any other thing?
Cost center.
Cost center.
So far, for any expenses, we are assigning a cost center, as we move forward, we will also talk about internal order. As we move forward, we will also be using internal order, that is where we will be clearly understanding what is capex, what is opex, where do you use cost center, where do you use internal order, what is the difference between cost center, internal order? Practically, we will see as we move forward. But before we understand this point, we need to make sure, at these fundamental points, we are all familiar with. So that, as we said, when we move forward, we will be purely focusing on business scenarios, practical requirements, which you will get in your project from your clients. Now, in this example, I am going to take water. Okay, if my intention is to sell water to my customer. If my intention is to sell the water to the customer, then water is my expense or water is my asset?
Asset.
Asset.
In this case, water will become my asset, at that situation, what I will do, water, I will keep it as a if we are purchasing the water and we are selling water to the customer, we are doing business with water. In that situation, water is not the expense, right? Water is an asset for you. Asset, like a current asset, you are storing the water in your place as a material stock, yes, no?
Yes.
You will tell that water is not in stock, we have so many customer orders pending, yes or no?
Yes.
Right, same water, sometimes is becoming the expense, same water, sometimes is becoming the asset, depending on the situation, depending on the requirement, depending on the scenario, which we need to understand as a FCO consultant. Because company to company, point to point, it might differ, you need to ensure, no previously added like this, why it is changing? Because there is a different scenario, there is a different requirement. In our example, currently, I am going ahead, water, as we are consuming it, I will be treating this as a water expenses. Now, your accounting entry for invoice will be, water expense a debit, vendor credit, is this correct?
Yes.
When you write this accounting entry, one point more we need to understand, water expense is GL, am I correct?
Yes.
Vendor, is it GL or is it sub GL?
Sub GL.
This is sub GL. Water is your GL and vendor is a sub GL. For water expenses, for GL account, you will get profit center or you will not get profit center?
No, profit center.
We will get profit center.
You will get profit center. Right, you will get profit center for GL in such a way that this is coming through CC to PC, because water expense is an expense, expense is a primary cost element, for primary, for primary cost element, cost center, cost center contains profit center inside it, the moment you put profit center, sorry, the moment you put cost center, automatically profit center is derived, am I correct? If you recollect all the points?
Yes.
Right, slowly, we need to make sure how each point is getting interconnected. Water expense is a GL account, this expense is a primary cost element, primary cost element with cost element category one. For this, you need to make sure, cost object is assigned, cost center we are assigning, when you put cost center, cost center contains profit center. From cost center, profit center is automatically updated, for the other side, which is your credit. Vendor account is there, vendor account is not a GL account, if it is not a GL account, we call it as a sub lecture, sub GL account. Sub GL account. For sub GL account, can you update cost center or profit center manually or we cannot manually?
No, we cannot put my value.
We cannot update manually any cost center, any profit center for vendor account, in short, sub GL. Then how system will take it, another point we need to recollect, no profit center, no accounting entry in accounts payable in SAP?
Yes.
Right? To justify this statement, no profit center, no accounting entry, we need to somehow bring the profit center for vendor account. To do it, we have a functionality called document splitting.
Yes.
Right, slowly we need to add another point called. A document. Splitting. Now, in the document splitting, there are so many document splitting. So many in this sense, how many splitings are there? Types?
It's good.
Three.
Three types.
Three you have, active document splitting. Passive document splitting, zero balance document splitting, in short, active passive zero. Right, when you're creating any vendor invoice, out of these three, active, passive, zero, which is applicable?
It.
Active.
Right, active. Splitting is happening here. Active splitting is happening here. Okay, here I will put. PC. Active. Document splitting. This clear?
Yes.
Okay, this is what it is happening here. Now, what we will do is, we will try to create it. We will try to create it, but before we create it, let us try the accounting interest in the sequence. This is the first.
So, can you explain this once again? This active first splitting one?
This, in the system, I will show it, what is active splitting. Okay? At this moment, you just remember the points that are listed in the Excel sheet. These things, we will do it in the system now. At that time, I will add additional point practically.
Normally, as a in the petty cash, petty cash transaction, we don't have a vendor. Because those are small, small transactions. Is it so in SAP also or? We always need to.
We will have in petty cash also, you have it. I have shown in the previous sessions, right? For any petty cash entry, you can put three accounts. Either GL account or customer account or vendor account, am I correct? In F B C G screen. We have, yeah. So you can put vendor account also for small, small payments only. Not big, big payments, small payments we build what? Okay, now, the second one. Entry for vendor. Credit memo. Vendor credit memo is basically a vendor written, am I right?
Yes.
Good.
Vendor credit memo is basically a vendor written. Now, whenever you write any vendor credit memo, always remember, credit memo is with reference to invoice. If I made purchase only, then I can make a written, post correct or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Without purchasing anything from you, can I say that, okay, please take this product written? I buy from A, can I go and return it to B?
No.
No, right, if I purchased it from A, I must return it to A only. Meaning, there must be a purchase transaction before you do a credit memo, before you do a return. Without any invoice, then this is called as adjustment entry.
We can also raise a debit.
Yeah, but in SAP, we call it as credit memo only.
If the memo is raised by the company, the purchasing company. So it's a debit memo or credit memo? It is a adjustment entry.
Yeah, yeah, credit memo only. In SAP terminology, we call it as credit memo. Any adjustment in the vendor account, we post a credit memo.
Okay.
Okay, now, this is exactly opposite entry of your invoice. You don't need to think anything, just.
Sorry to interrupt Ajay, this credit memo will be raised by com- uh, uh, company or the vendor?
Both are possible. Sometimes what will happen, I will give a return to you and you will give me an acknowledgement later, that debit memo. Okay, so and so product is returned. Sometimes what I will do, I will return the product, you will tell, okay, we received the product, you can adjust this amount in your payment.
Okay.
Not necessary every time vendor give, will give a credit memo copy or a debit memo copy, most of the times they will not give. Sometimes you will get it, sometimes you will not get it, but from your side, since you have made a return, you need to account it. Because you need to reduce the liability rate.
Yes.
Now, same accounting entry you copy, debit, credit. Bring this here, but the swapping is required. Debit will become credit, credit will become debit, am I right? Now, water expense will go to debit side or credit side?
Credit side.
Credit.
Credit side, vendor will go to? Debit side?
Debit side.
If you look at this accounting entry and if you look at this accounting entry, it must be quite opposite. Credit memo, vendor is on the debit side, invoice, vendor is on the credit side, debit, credit, the net will come into the picture.
Yes.
Water expenses is on the debit side in invoice. Water expense is on the credit side in credit memo, debit, credit will again show the net amount.
Yes.
Right, now same logic is applicable here. Active document splitting only. Same thing, here you will get. Active document splitting, meaning if we are able to understand invoice clearly. If you are trying to understand everything based on the invoice, all the other things will become simplified. Because everything is interconnected, else what will happen? Every point we will try to look at separate, separate, when you try to look at overall scenario, overall requirement. We will have unnecessary confusion. Now, this is the second one. Straight forward. Third one, payment. Entry for. Vendor payment. Now, when you are talking about vendor payment, we have two ways, right? Option number one, you can process the payment with cash. Option number two, you can process the payment with bank. At this moment, we will process the payment with bank. Not with cash, we will process payment with what?
Bank.
Bank only, because it's very less. Chances that a vendor is paid by cash unless it is a very small, small amount. That we will see later on. Now, in case of a vendor payment. Now, vendor, whenever you process any payment, money is coming in or money is going out?
Going out.
Debit what comes in, credit what goes out, how are you processing payment through cash, through bank?
Bank will be credited.
Bank.
Bank credit.
And when we. Yes, when we were talking about bank, we understood each bank account is used with the help of which concept, which functionality?
House bank.
House bank.
Each bank account will be used with the help of house bank concept. In house bank, we need to create how many GL account minimum for each bank account? One or three, minimum.
Three.
Three.
Main account.
Minimum three.
Going on.
Main account and then sub account, in short, bank main account, bank incoming account, bank outgoing account. For vendor payment, it should be bank main, bank incoming, bank outgoing.
Bank outgoing.
Bank outgoing, credit what goes out, money is going out, from where, from bank account, I will put. Bank outgoing, yes or no?
Yes.
According to personal account, debit the receiver, credit the receiver, who is receiving money?
Vendor is receiving.
Vendor is receiving money, who is your vendor?
Pepsi.
Pepsi.
Pepsi. Now, here we will replace Pepsi here. Okay, now I'll replace. Pepsi. Limited, clear? Same thing. My vendor will be Pepsi Limited debit. Now, same thing. Here. PC is required. But. Here. PC. From. Pepsi, from where PC is coming, in bank account?
Pepsi.
Pepsi is what, vendor?
Vendor.
Yes, vendor.
Okay, in this accounting entry, where is Pepsi?
Debit.
In the debit side.
Right, here. No, PC from invoice.
Invoice.
Here, PC is coming from invoice, because when you are making a payment, you are making payment because you purchased something. At the time of purchase, you recorded invoice, at the time of invoice, you received. Profit center with the help of active document splitting, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes or no, your vendor account for the invoice is already holding a profit center. Based on active document splitting. Now, when you are making the payment, the same Pepsi account is coming here. Now, the same Pepsi account at the time of invoice is accounted with profit center through active splitting. Now, through the active splitting in the payment, Pepsi will bring the profit center into payment entry. From this Pepsi Limited, profit center is transported to bank account. This is called as what, splitting?
Pass.
Passive splitting.
Passive.
Passive document splitting.
This is called as passive splitting. At this moment, remember only these one-liners. At this moment, remember only these one-liners, do not think anything beyond this. Because as we move forward, I will give clear examples, multiple things, and then you will get multiple assignments to practice with which. You will easily understand the concept without any confusion, without any deviation. Am I clear? I want everybody to strictly focus on the one-liners entries, whatever we are writing. Get the logic, get the fundamental points clearly, with which you will easily do it on your own many things. This is your vendor account. Vendor payment, I did not write any amount anywhere as of now. The reason why I am not writing the amount is just to ensure, when you refer the Excel sheet, when you try to do it, I want you to start. Applying your understanding, I want you to apply your mind and try to understand it, try to write points. Which are not clearly listed here on your own. If I write everything on your own, there is nothing you will do it when you practice it. That is the reason I am not writing certain points here, I am only talking. Now, I will try to do it. Now, I will try to do it in the system. Same thing, I will only explain for the customer, I want you to do it for customer. Okay, now, first one, to do it. What we need to do? Point number one, we need to create a vendor.
Ajay, for document splitting, one more method is there, no, PC. Zero balance.
That is with a different purpose, when you have a different debit, a different credit, then only zero balance will come. Okay? Where are we using it, which server? Now, okay, I am in SAP now. F B zero three, let me check. Our company code AP ninety. Execute. Okay, we have some entries created in AP ninety company code. Let us also look at. A GL account master in this AP ninety company code, F S double zero. If I switch company to AP ninety. Asset. Liability. Income, expense, these accounts are there. Okay, what we need now? First, we need to create a vendor. To create vendor, you need a GL account from asset or liability.
Liability.
To create a vendor. To create a vendor, we need a GL account from liability. What would be that GL account from liability, GL name?
Accounts payable, domestic.
Accounts payable, GL account we need to create, right? Now, what I will do, I will create one GL account called as accounts payable here. Click on create. Change this company code to AP nine zero. Anyone account, let's say, I'll take two thousand, one thousand one, any number is okay. Because we did not create as of now specific account group for each category of account. We will do it with the help of chart of account understanding, T B P and L balance sheet. Based on the reporting structure from Wednesday, we will do it. GL account type, your accounts payable is part of which type?
Balance sheet. Balance sheet.
Balance sheet, put balance sheet. Since we have not created any group specific to accounts payable, which is applicable at this moment?
Liabilities.
Liabilities, put liabilities. And I will write the description like. Accounts payable, domestic. I'll put. Account payable, domestic vendors. Control data. Those who are not talking, please be on mute while you are not talking. Okay. And here what we need to do, reconciliation account for account type, this should be vendor. Am I right, it should be vendor. And sort key, you can take anything, but preferably you'll have to take vendor, check if you have vendor here. Vendor number is there. You can take vendor, you can take general, you can take purchase order number, depending on the business requirement, you can take anything. Put this. Create bank interest. Field status group for any reconciliation account.
G zero seven.
G zero. Sixty seven. Take G zero sixty seven and then proceed to save. One account is created and this account is required to create vendor master. Now, to book invoice, what other account is required from GL? Water expenses?
Water expenses.
Right, now I will create one more GL account, let's say, four thousand, one thousand one. Enter. Type description, any expense. Which type we are supposed to take? Primary cost or revenue. Take this primary cost revenue. Account group, we have only one, which is applicable, expenses. I will take, let's say, water charges. Put same thing, water charges. Control data.
But actually, it's not a primary cost, Ajay, is it a primary cost? Because it's not a direct material, no? Water charges?
No, this, this primary cost is not coming in that way where we are referring from a costing point of view. This primary cost is referring to cost that requires cost center, controlling side. If you wanted to plan the cost, monitor the cost, compare what is your actual, what is your plan.
Can you open the drill down once again, Ajay, please? Primary cost drill down that option. What are the other options we have? Non-operating expenses, no, non-operating expenses more.
When you take non-operating, you cannot put cost center. Because the objective that you are doing this primary cost is to ensure. You will, you want to have a control on your water expenses, right? You will allocate some budget for every department. Yes, no?
Yes, yes.
And tomorrow, when you see the cost, you want to see who consumed more water. Let's say, I am getting huge water bill every month, now I am not able to identify who is consuming more. If I wanted to do it, I will have to create cost center for every department, finance, admin, X, Y, Z, at any point of time. If you wanted to do it. It is possible only with primary cost, primary revenue. Okay?
Okay.
In short, cost or expensive tracking is possible. Monitoring is possible with primary cost or primary revenue, with which. It will take the data into controlling site with which you can control the P and L accounts, cost and revenue. Clear?
Okay. Sir.
Yes.
Purpose of. Cost element category is to control the. To assign the cost center mandativeness.
Correct. Okay, come down, for P and L account, can we take reconciliation or it is applicable only for balance sheet?
Only applicable for balance sheet.
Only for balance sheet.
This is only for balance sheet. And then, sort key, I'll take zero, zero, one. Can we put open item management for P and L account or it is applicable only for balance sheet?
It is applicable for balance sheet.
Right, open item is only for balance sheet. Now, cost element category, this is coming because your GL account is. Primary. For expenses, which one we need to take?
Zero one.
Zero one.
Zero one. Zero one. Zero one. For income?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Eleven, right? This is expense account, put zero one, enter. Come to create a bank interest, field status group expense, common one, G zero zero one you take. Proceed to save. Now from the G L side, both accounts are available now. Accounts payable to create a vendor account. Water expenses to book the invoice, both are available, fine. Now we need to create a vendor.
Sir, sir, this class after, can you please give some examples for the non-operating G Ls?
That I will give, this is only to make sure that you understand one vendor cycle execution on your own, that's it, nothing beyond that. Exclusive purpose of this session is to ensure one vendor cycle you are able to execute so that. When we do the different practical examples, at that time, I will write different, different assignments, I will write different, different scenarios. But before everybody understands them, I want everybody to understand basic scenario first. If basic scenario is not clear, I cannot add a different scenarios, I cannot give different assignments for your practice. Okay? Going forward, as I said, my explanation, my practical showing will be reduced. And I will make you understand the requirement scenario, I will write the logic, I will put the numbers and then you will practice the assignment, bring the numbers on your own. Yeah, who is it?
Ajay, uh, for the accounts payable, uh, did you check that open item management?
No, not required because any reconciliation account is by default open item, we don't take that, even if you take, it will not take. All reconciliation accounts are by default open item management accounts.
Sir, what is the use of open item management?
Open item management will allow you to track what is payable, what is receivable, what is paid, what is received. Let's say, you are paying, you are purchasing from me, something on a credit basis. Assuming in a month you made four purchases with me, if you made four purchases, I would have given you four invoices, four bills.
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
And when I give you four bills, how many payments are you supposed to make?
Four.
Four payment. Now if you keep this open item management in your system, you can see. Four invoices are due for payment. When you make first invoice payment, after making the first invoice payment, you can see. Only three invoices are due for payment. Meaning whatever is outstanding, you can track, you can see them separately. You can also pull the report, when the invoice is created, when it is paid, everything you can track. Because this are all assets and liability.
It's like open.
Uh, open and clear item, applicable only for current asset, current liability, which is due for settlement within money.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now let us move forward to create a vendor. I will go to B P, I am not showing the B P vendor creation because everybody is already aware of it. What is our vendor in our example? Vendor name?
Pepsi.
Pepsi, Pepsi is a person or Pepsi is an organization?
Organization.
Organization, click on, create organization. Grouping. In two, three, P three server. Which group anybody used? Okay, let me take anyone group, one nine double zero. D X one zero?
Yeah, yes, Ajay.
Okay. I'll select company, I will write. Pepsi Limited. Search term also, I will put Pepsi L T D. Address, as I said, just ignore my address. I am writing. Pepsi Street, house number sixty five, postal code six hundred, seven hundred. City, I will say. Hyderabad, country is India. Region, I am taking, let's say. This will go where? T G Telangana, okay, and then. Enter. Check if you have, if you have maintenance language. Communication, keep this English, enter and proceed to save. First point, we need to make sure B P is created. We got the B P created, what is B P number? One nine zero zero one one? This is our B P which is created. Now for converting the B P into vendor. On the same screen, first we need to switch to change mode, you are on display organization. Click on this icon, switch between display and the change. Now role for B P vendor at company code?
F L V N double zero.
F L V N double zero.
F L V N double zero, supplier financial accounting, pick this, enter. First point, once you are on this screen, F L V N zero zero role, click on vendor general data. In vendor general data, make sure account group is getting updated automatically. B P number is becoming vendor number with same code by default. If this is not happening. Something is wrong with your business partner or B P configuration. Okay, make sure this is done, then go to company code data on the top. To which company code are we planning to extend this vendor?
A P ninety.
Put A P ninety, our company code. Enter reconciliation account, meaning you need to connect sub ledger to a main ledger via reconciliation account. Open the dropdown, it will bring the G L account which is created as reconciliation account type K vendor. In F S double zero, G L account, control data tab, only one is there currently. Pick the appropriate vendor, domestic vendor. Sort key. I will take based on posting date. Other options at this moment not relevant. Other options at this moment are not relevant and these other options we will understand. Based on specific scenario for each vendor account with different, different practical cases. At this moment, let me save this vendor account.
Ajay, for the grouping, we are supposed to take A P ninety's B P, right?
I have not created that config here, so I am not taking it, I am taking the existing. B P config is created at client level. Your voice is coming very low, if you can talk a little louder.
Uh, will that accept? You know, you took a different grouping, which was not created under A P ninety, so how, how will that?
It will accept. Because your B P configuration is client level, once the config is done, any company code can use that setting. Okay? Now vendor is created, your vendor code is what? One nine zero zero one one. Make sure B P number, vendor number are same. Tomorrow, for any reason, if you are doing sales also with this customer, customer code also should be same, one nine zero zero one one. To make sure all codes are same, we are maintaining a setting called C V I, customer vendor integration. Now you are good with G L master, we are also good with vendor master. In short, can we proceed with vendor invoice? To post vendor invoice, T code. F dash forty three, enter. Now if I wanted to post vendor invoice as on today's date or with current date, I need to make sure current date period is open. I need to ensure current day's period is open, A P ninety is the posting period. Now to open posting period, T code.
O B fifty two.
O B fifty two.
Go to O B fifty two, A P ninety, enter. Check if current period is opened or not opened.
Current, current period is open, sir.
Current period.
Not open, not open.
Not open, you are in April, right? April is period number four.
Yeah.
Change period to four, make sure you are not receiving error messages before you post any entry, ensure. The possible points that we need to check and you are in a position to verify these points. First time it is okay, it is kind of a re- revision, practice for you. Enter, period is open, this is okay. That also we will go, we will come in sequence, okay? This is done. Next one, number range. K R we are going to post, we need to know if number range is created or not. How do I verify without getting the error number range?
O B A seven.
Go to O B A seven, not F B L one. Go to position, K R document type, double click on it, this is nineteen number range. Click on number range from here. Put your company code A P nine zero, click on change interval, is nineteen updated or not updated?
Not updated.
Not updated.
Not updated, let's add it, plus one nine, twenty twenty five, logic is one nine.
What is the relevance of number range, general speaking, generally?
Whenever you record any invoice, you want your internal reference number, right? Document number, voucher number.
Okay, the, that, that will keep blank, from here it will take, huh?
Yes, from here it will take. In this sequential order it will take, first number will be this, if you have already posted, half, voucher number. And once you start using it, it will show the last number, N R status is last used number. If you post any number, any document with S A, S A is assigned with zero one. Next document, when anybody is posting in this company code A P ninety, it will be four, am I right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Because it is the last number.
Got it, yeah.
For nineteen, it is a zero, meaning nothing is posted with nineteen as of now. When you post, the first number will be updated as N R status. Save it and we are not enabling this external tick mark. If you enable it while post, posting the entry. You will see the document number here. If you put external there, you will have to put a number here manually, but we don't do it. It is always supposed to be internal, so that system will automatically allocate next available number. Because tomorrow when I look at the document number one, definitely I will see the next number will be two. If I see document number one, document number five, in between two, three, four is missing, it leads to so many questions or not? Where is document number two? Where is three? Where is four? Why after one, why you are taking any specific reason? Because there might be lot of questions you might expect from the auditor, yes or no?
Control issue, yeah.
Alright, so to avoid this kind of thing, you'll have to ensure internal number range strictly. Save this and come back to the invoice posting screen. Documented date is referring to what? Original vendor invoice date. Whenever you are receiving any vendor invoice, vendor invoice will come al- come along with a soft copy or a hard copy. P D F or some kind of A force size sheet. On that vendor invoice, do you find vendor document number or not? Vendor invoice number or not? Any bill you see, do you get bill number in short?
Yes.
You take any bill, whatever you purchase, don't throw it straight away from now onward. When you buy anything, when you receive a bill, look at the bill, observe it. From the bill, you have to observe two points. Point number one, bill number, point number two, bill date. Bill date is your document date, bill number must be strictly referenced. If you are purchasing today, you have got invoice or bill with current date, take today's date as document date. Type K R for any, any vendor invoice, A P nine zero company code. You are entering the entry today in the system, posting date to this. Period number four is getting updated based on the posting date with the help of fiscal year variant. Invoice currency is I N R, so you are entering it in I N R. Document number in F B N one, no external tick box is enabled. Meaning it is internal, internal meaning, system will allow the number range while posting the entry, leave it blank. Reference should be strictly internal vendor document number or internal vendor bill number. Vendor will generate a number internally from their side and when you receive the vendor invoice copy, you have to look at bill number. Let's say if number is something like this, put this number here. Header text, let's say. Water charges. April, anything you can put. After this, put posting key thirty one, posting key thirty one is debit or credit?
Credit.
Credit.
It is credit. Credit of which account? The G L account, customer account, vendor account?
Vendor account.
Vendor account.
Vendor account. Right, you'll have to open the dropdown. Put your company code here, if you are not able to find, you have so many options here. If you are confused, at the right side, you will find an icon, if you click on it, you will get a dropdown, from here you can choose. Supplier by company code, you can see supplier by company code, supplier by any option. Supplier by country, region and company code. Put your company code, press enter. In your company code, whatever vendors are currently created, they will be displayed. Pick the appropriate vendor. We are looking at Pepsi, only one vendor is there. Select this vendor, press enter. What is the invoice value as per our example?
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, put eighty thousand here and due date always at this moment you ignore it, hold on. And assignment you put. Water charges for April twenty twenty four while writing the accounting entry in our Excel sheet. Specifically for invoice. To the vendor account. Center manually. P C, this is coming from active document splitting. Document splitting means profit center is updated manually or profit center is updated automatically. Document splitting means it is automatic. Automatic for vendor line item. No, for vendor account, you cannot update the profit center, right? I am on the vendor line item now.
Cost center will manually.
No, 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 I am only talking about vendor line item. In the vendor account is my question. In vendor account, do I have any option to input profit center? Look at the screen properly.
No, no, there is no.
There is no field to enter profit center, meaning you are not entering profit center but profit center is getting updated, automatic or manual?
Automatic.
Automatic.
Automatic because of document splitting functionality, am I right?
Yes. Yes.
Automatic because of document splitting functionality, within the document splitting, it is using active document splitting method. Okay, this is what you need to understand from this line item and then go to posting key forty. Now whatever we are purchasing, is it expense or what?
Expenses.
Expenses.
This is expense. Open the dropdown because we are purchasing water for our internal usage, not for selling to the customer, am I right?
Yes.
We need to understand what are we purchasing and we also need to understand why are we purchasing, what is the purpose of it? Accordingly, you can decide whether the nature is Capex or the nature is Opex. In this example, the water expense is Capex or water expense is Opex.
Opex.
Opex. Opex. Select water charges, enter. Amount, I will take same amount eighty thousand, enter. For any expenses, since you have created this water expense as a primary cost. With cost element category one, what will be mandatory? Cost to center?
Center.
Center.
Cost center.
Center. Open the dropdown, put controlling area, company code, select anyone cost center, it is okay, I am selecting. One cost center, enter. When you put cost center, through the cost center, what is automatically updated?
Profit center.
Profit center.
Profit center. To see the profit center, if I am not able to see here, where I should click?
More option.
More I can.
More, let me click on more. In the more, you are able to see profit center is automatically updated.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, continue, enter. Right, continue, enter, next I will put the same thing here.
The tolerance is not maintained.
These are all maintained, if it is not maintained, it will not come here, it will throw error straight forward. They are maintained as part of your initial baseline config itself.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Now go to document, click on simulate, when you click on simulate, you read the accounting entry. By looking at the amount sign, point number one, point number two by looking at the posting key, don't blindly read Pepsi water charges. If you read it this way, we tended to say Pepsi debit, water credit, am I right? Because we are all used to say debit first, credit next, but is it in debit credit sequence or it is the other way around?
Credit debit series.
Credit debit series.
Right, it is updated in the other way around, meaning first you have to look at posting key thirty one forty, if you are able to understand. Differentiate with posting key debit credit, it is okay, if not, no problem, look at the amount. Any amount with a negative sign, in S I P negative sign comes at the end, you can see this eighty thousand minus towards the end?
Yes.
If you find a minus sign, it is credit, if you don't find a minus sign, it is debit. Now here if you read the accounting entry based on the amount, Pepsi Limited Credit, Water Charges Debit. If you read it in a proper accounting language, you have to read it in such a way, Water Charges Debit, Pepsi Credit, am I right?
Yes.
Now debit amount is eighty thousand, credit amount is eighty thousand, total there are two line items. This is your data entry view simulation.
This forty debit can be used for all the transaction of purchase.
Any G L account debit is forty only.
Because we have so many debit options, if you go in the that forty where you put the forty, the screen, there are so many options are there. So we are supposed to use only forty.
The nature of account, if you are using G L account, it is either forty or fifty, based on debit and credit. Any G L account, we will be using only forty fifty. In any screen, G L debit is forty, in any screen, G L credit is fifty, okay?
Okay.
Alright, now this is your entry view. Next one, go to document, click on simulate a general ledger view, when you click on simulate a general ledger view. We need to make sure at profit center level, our accounting is becoming zero, to do it first I need to ensure. Amount I will do a total, selected the amount column, click on this sum, total. Make sure this is becoming zero, debit equal to credit, total is a zero, to see the profit center vice, what I need to do? Select the profit center, click on where?
Subtotal, next option.
Click on this subtotal, if you do a subtotal, you will have to ensure total document is a zero, profit center vice total is also zero. Now vendor account is replaced with accounts payable G L account and you see the G L account is coming, not the vendor account. Our vendor account was what, one nine zero zero one one, something like that?
Yes.
Right, it is now changing from sub ledger to main ledger as a result, profit center is coming with the help of what? Document splitting, to see how document splitting is happening, you have to click on expert mode. On the expert mode you will see there are two line items, here you can see baseline. Baseline is the line where profit center is entered manually, you entered profit center manually for expense account or for vendor account?
Expense account.
For expense account.
Expense account is this, it is representing the baseline, based on the expense account, vendor account is a split. You can see this and here you can see split according to base row, which row number it is telling, baseline item number two. System is telling from line item number two, line item number one is receiving profit center. What is line item number two, four thousand one double zero one, which means it is water expenses. Vendor offsetting account is water expenses, from water expenses, profit center is updated in vendor account, is this what the meaning of it?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Only these key points you try to remember, understand now, as we move forward, I will give different, different examples. With multiple profit centers, with multiple expenses and all, I'll do it. Because we are on the simulate a general ledger. In the simulate a general ledger, system will take only the G L account, it will not show the sub ledger account like vendor customer will be replaced with. Approve up corresponding reconciliation account updated in the vendor master, customer master, okay? Alright, this is done, I will come back and then I will do a post. Now what we did, we are able to post invoice number successfully, invoice document? Now immediately what I will do is, I will try to look at my vendor outstanding. Now, to see the vendor outstanding, you have to look at vendor line item report, F B L one N. Put a report called F B L one N, press enter, in this, select your vendor, vendor code. Open the dropdown, if you remember, you can directly type the number, if not you can open the dropdown, put your company code, press enter. Choose the vendor that you are looking for, we have only one vendor. Choose this vendor, enter, I want to look at my vendor outstanding as on today. Open item means unsettled, unprocessed, unpaid transactions as on today. I want to report as on today, select open item, click on execute. And you have to look at the status here, what is the status symbol, this is open red light?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, if it is showing open, if you find a red circle symbol, it means transaction is posted but not settled, not paid. How much is the value, eighty thousand?
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand.
Okay, look at only this, don't look at anything else on the report at this moment because. We need to understand other parameters from the invoice posting, from the vendor transaction, accordingly I will make those points connected with this report. At this moment, look at vendor number, red light symbol, amount, clear, eighty thousand, negative or positive?
Negative.
Eighty thousand negative because you have purchased an invoice, vendor account always shows the credit balance, vendor invoice is credit. As a result, vendor account is giving credit balance of eighty thousand, now assuming. After making these purchases, we made a return of how much in our example?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, now we need to process a credit memo, for processing the credit memo, what I will do is? T code for credit memo?
F dash forty one.
F dash forty one.
I will come to F dash forty one, first point, when you look at F dash forty one, look at the document type.
K G.
A G.
K G. Check document number range, T code?
O B A seven.
O B A seven.
O B A seven, if you are already aware of number range, that this so and so number range is missing, then you can go to F B N one directly, if not. Go to O B A seven, position, K G, K is representing vendor, G is representing a credit memo in S I P. Put this, double click on vendor credit memo, number range is what?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, to maintain it, click on number range information, our company code is A P ninety, click on change interval. Add a new interval seventeen twenty twenty five, you can put seventeen all zeros one, seventeen all lines, enter. And then save it. Done, number range is updated, come back, now if you purchased it on twentieth, can I return it on nineteenth?
No.
Not possible, sir.
Not right, you need to make sure what is your invoice date and then accordingly put your credit memo dates. Don't blindly post whatever comes in our mind, because these are all silly mistakes, but it will have huge understanding impact in our mind. You purchased invoice on twentieth, so definitely I can return it on twentieth or after twentieth. In our example, we will do it on today itself, I'll take same date twenty, yes. Same date I will take, reference I will put invoice number, reference I'll put invoice number or I'll put the same number written. Okay? Something you put like this written, header text, let's say, will. April adjustment, anything you can put. And when you write the accounting entry, automatically system is giving what posting key, twenty one?
Twenty one, debit.
In invoice, system was automatically proposing vendor credit, in credit memo, system is automatically proposing vendor debit, meaning system is helping in accounting or not?
Yes.
Right, debit and then our vendor account is one nine zero zero one one, enter, what is the return value?
Ten thousand.
Thousand.
Ten thousand, now is this written with respect to invoice or generally you are returning it?
No. Invoice.
Now go to vendor line item report, what is your invoice number here, invoice document number, our S I P invoice document number? Nineteen all zeros one?
Zeros one.
Right, this is the invoice number, you need to strictly make sure while creating vendor credit memo. In vendor line item, you will get invoice reference, put this and then press enter. Automatically it will read the data, invoice number nineteen all zeros one from fiscal year twenty twenty five, in this document, line item number one. So that tomorrow when somebody is looking at this credit memo, they know that okay, ten thousand is returned, they will again ask against which invoice this is returned, yes or no?
Yes, yes, sir.
If I know this ten thousand return is against this invoice number, now I will look at this invoice number, what is the invoice value?
Ten thousand. Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, invoice value is eighty thousand, if I know against this invoice, there is a return of ten thousand. Only then I will initiate payment of eighty thousand minus ten thousand, seventy thousand, otherwise I will issue full payment eighty thousand to vendor? Yes or no, this might be a mistake?
Yes.
There should be information, right, not necessarily the person who is entering the credit memo will always go and tell the person who will process the payment. Again, not necessary the person who will process the payment will remember it. So we will not do any kind of manual activities, you'll do it, everything automated. So that whenever anybody is processing this invoice, I want system to allow payment of seventy not eighty. Because out of this eighty, we are processing a credit memo of ten thousand by entering invoice number?
Yes.
Now I will put. Credit memo, water bill, April, these notes and all I will tell you how to write.
Hi, sir, if that invoice is already paid, then also we will update that document.
If paid, you will not put.
You have to adjust in which are.
You have to adjust in the any open invoice.
Sir, one doubt, sir, when we are giving the down payment, after only the invoice will come now, sir. In that scenario, we need to update that then the down payment, the doc number, sir, here.
That is when you are converting a down payment to normal invoice, that we have not covered it yet, when we are on the down payment scenario, I will show that. Every scenario I will show crystal clear, in detail, don't worry about it. Okay, now line item number one, vendor is given, now we need to reduce the expense also, now before I do it. The way I opened vendor line item, similarly I will open expense line item, F A G L L zero three. Okay, expense account, execute, as on today, what is the water bill showing in the P N L?
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, now when you returned ten thousand, do you still have to show eighty thousand in P N L or you should show only seventy thousand in P N L?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand.
Seventy, meaning we should also reduce the expense amount? So you need to make sure your water charge is credited with ten thousand, am I right?
Yes.
So you should put water charge credit, credit is fifty, water charge this is G L account, enter again same logic, put ten thousand. Expense account, cost center, enter. Let's say water charges. Credit memo. For invoice, for credit memo, same document splitting logic, active document splitting, document simulate. Okay, now Pepsi account debit, water charge account credit, ten thousand, document simulate general ledger. Total is ten thousand. Profit center vice subtotal is becoming zero, expert mode. Same logic, line item number one, line item number two, baseline, split according to base row. Exactly the same information of invoice. Continue and then come back, let me post it. Now credit memo is also posted, after posting the credit memo, two things you need to notice, vendor liability. Should be eighty thousand or it should be reduced to seventy now?
Seventy.
Seventy.
It should be reduced to seventy thousand and go to list. On the same report, if you come left top, do you find the list, dropdown, in the list, click on refresh or you press F eight on the keyboard, refresh. Now how much is the outstanding, look at the total updated in this yellow colors. Seventy thousand, okay, now system is combining these two with the help of this column, what is this column called, invoice reference? Based on the invoice reference, system will automatically adjust against this invoice. Seventy thousand is outstanding, if you look at your expense, expense also should be updated as eighty or seventy?
Seventy.
Seventy.
Seventy, same thing, go to list, click on refresh, now it is the same point that I am refreshing in my vendor line item report, in my G L line item report, in short. Same logic we are applying in every screen, am I correct, if you notice, if you observe clearly?
Yes, sir.
Report to the report, screen to screen, we are not adding any new logic, same logic but we are using it in different, different places, seventy thousand. Now if I have to process the payment to Pepsi, how much I should pay eighty or seventy?
Seventy.
Seventy.
I should pay seventy, now to process the payment, what do you require, bank account? Now if I go to F S double zero. Do you have bank account currently? No, not created yet, I don't think, index server I am using it, I think this is a somebody else's company code, let me see who created it. I only created it. But we are posting the other entries in the other server, right? Okay, I think I logged into the another server, but I was posting the regular entries in the other server, which is okay. Now we need to create a bank account, to create a bank account, what is required, one is your house bank and the other one is account ID. At this moment, we used to bank account as balance sheet account or as a cash account?
Balance sheet.
Balance sheet account.
Balance sheet account, now just to complete this transaction, I am skipping the house bank creation portion only to execute this scenario. I need which bank account, main account, incoming account, outgoing account?
Outgoing account.
Main bank outgoing.
Outgoing account.
Outgoing account.
Click on create, I will take one thousand. Click on create, I will take one thousand and outgoing should be ending with one or ending with two? Any logic is fine, but you need to ensure whatever you are deciding, it is strictly followed at all your company codes. Don't make unnecessary experiment because you will get confused, one time you will create it as incoming. Same number you will create some other time as outgoing, might create unwanted confusion, don't make such confusing practice. Let me take twelve. Now at this moment, I am creating a bank account as balance sheet account. Later on, we will create a bank account as cash account as well. This one, account group, I will take asset. We are creating only asset because we are yet to create complete the chart of account, account group, this we will do it with the help of. P N L balance sheet, understanding accordingly we will create approximately fifty plus account groups. Short text, I will write anyone bank name, let's say. H D F C outgoing one seven two eight. Here also I will put H D F C outgoing one seven two eight, this is two three P three server. In this two three P three server, in this company code, somebody please create. House bank, account ID, and then complete the remaining two G L accounts, am I clear? Anybody can create it, it is okay. Anybody who has got ID in two three P three, anybody can complete this house bank setup in my company code for this G L account. Control data. Your incoming account, your outgoing account, it has to be open item or non-open item?
Open item. Open item.
This has to be open item because you'd have to perform B R S bank reconciliation. Sort key. Posting date zero zero one. And create a bank interest. It should be what? Obligator value date. For all the bank G L account, you need to ensure value date is mandatory, proceed to.
Sir, balance in local currency.
This is by default enabled, this is not required.
Yes sir.
Okay, if you took balance in local currency, when you see the G L account balance report, it will not show the other currency value. These points I will show from Wednesday when we start the scenarios. There I will add different, different scenarios, I will create a different account, I will ticket. Post one entry, go to the respective report, I will show the output practically, then I will write, if you take this, this will be the impact. And sudden fields I will explain, I will give the assignment, okay? But before everybody is in a position to execute the scenarios, do the assignment, we need to ensure. Everybody is comfortable with executing a basic scenario, understanding the basic requirement, that is what we're trying to do it in the current session. Now bank account is available. To process vendor payment, T code, normal vendor payment, F dash fifty three.
Yes.
F dash forty.
Normal vendor payment fifty three, forty three is for invoice. Put F dash fifty three. In F dash fifty three, post vendor outgoing payment, document type.
K Z.
K Z. If I want to ensure no document number range error is received, I need to verify the number range and maintain it, T code.
O B A seven.
Go to O B A seven. Position, document type, K Z. Double click on K Z vendor payment, number range is fifteen. Click on number range information, A P nine zero. Change interval. Add interval, one five fifteen, twenty twenty five, logic is fifteen all zeros one and then. Fifteen all lines, is this correct? And then save it. No T R for the document number range because it is part of your cut over activity or open client activity, this is done. Payment also assuming we are processing today only. I'll put this, all the other information as usual, currency I N R, document number internal, leave it blank, reference, I will say. Payment. Let's say. April water bill, I'll put payment. April water bill. House bank account ID field is not mandatory, these two will become mandatory if your bank account is created as. Cash account, currently is our bank account cash account or is our bank account balance sheet account type?
Balance sheet.
Balance sheet account type.
Balance sheet, if it is our balance sheet, these two are not relevant, if your cash account or if your bank account, sorry, if your bank account is. Cash account type, this will become mandatory, ignore it. Account, open the dropdown, which account are we supposed to use for payment? H D F C outgoing. In your practice, you will also have H D F C main account, H D F C incoming, but make sure you will strictly pick. H D F C or any respective bank outgoing account. Payment amount, am I supposed to pay seventy or eighty thousand?
Seventy. But do you have a controlling necessity that we cannot pay more than seventy thousand? Do you have a control?
Yes, we have the control. Okay, seventy thousand and local currency is also same because your company code currency, payment currency are same. If they are different, then you'll have to put converted currency. Bank charges, value date, payment date today. Now what are we doing? What kind of entry is it? Invoice, credit memo or payment?
Payment, payment.
Payment, in payment, we are understanding the document splitting, according to document splitting, in payment. Are we supposed to put profit center for a bank account or bank account supposed to receive profit center from vendor account?
From vendor account.
From vendor, bank should receive profit center, meaning I should enter profit center or I should leave it blank.
Leave it blank.
We'll have to leave it blank, okay? Now text you put. Payment, account, vendor account you put, what is your vendor account, you type this, one nine zero zero one one. Put one nine zero zero one one. And at this moment, don't take anything in the additional selection, let it be none. After one nine zero zero one one, straight away click on process open item. It will process the open item, in short, in the vendor line item. Whatever is appearing with red light, all the red light items will appear when you click on process open item. Because this is process open item. And if you see the vendor line item report. What is this? This is also open item?
Yes.
Status is open, right? It will bring this open items here. Click on process open item. You can see this, right? You can see this invoice value is eighty thousand, it is selling partially paid ten thousand, meaning if you click on this one. It is giving K G document type, ten thousand, eighty ten adjusted value is seventy, am I right?
Yes, balanced.
This, in case if you are not getting, you will find editing option. If you click on editing option, you have to click on this, include invoice reference, include what?
Invoice reference.
Invoice reference, if you look at vendor line item report, it is having invoice reference. It will bring the value based on the invoice reference. Okay, in case if you are not getting, what you do is, on this screen, click on editing option, tick invoice reference, save it. Come back, simulate once again, if it is not reflecting, come out and then re-enter, you will see this. And you can collapse it from here. Okay, now seventy, I need to double click on it, in the I N R gross, if I double click on it. Seventy thousand entered amount, seventy thousand assigned amount, any difference amount or it is fully allocated?
Fully allocated.
This is fully allocated, after ensuring amount entered, amount assigned is equal, go to document, click on simulate. When you click on simulate, accounting entry is, the way you need to read it is, based on the amount. Negative sign is credit, positive sign is debit, whenever you read the accounting entry, always remember debit first, credit next, am I right?
Yes.
Debit first, credit next, now how do you read the accounting entry? Pepsi debit, bank outgoing a credit. Now here, document. Simulate general ledger. Profit center is coming, even though you did not put profit center for a bank account and also for the vendor account. Nowhere we put profit center manually right in this entry, how system is bringing, we need to understand, do a total. This. Profit center, subtotal, it is becoming zero at a document level. It is also becoming zero at profit center level, if I click on expert mode. You will see something called inheritance. You will see inheritance, three line items because one is your bank payment, one is vendor invoice, one is vendor credit memo, am I right?
Yes.
Now you can see inheritance for bank. It is receiving inheritance, inheritance means copied from the previous line item, that's what the inheritance, yes or no? Not your own. Inheritance means it is.
That means we can easily identify that some, you know, one more transaction means some credit memo or advance or something like that, right?
Here it will clearly give that document number from here, this is inherited, it is inheriting. Profit center from this company code, this document number, this fiscal year, this line item. Similarly, this company code, this document, this, clear? I will make you understand all these points with more detailed example, with more detailed explanation, once we move forward. But before that, I wanted to ensure these points you are familiar with, these screens you have at least created one entry. Continue. Come back. And whenever you come back from the payment, you will see that automatically created line item is deleted. This is correct because when you are entering the entry, we only put bank line item. Vendor line item, we have clicked on post, sorry, process open item and then checked.
Yes.
Yes or no? That is why automatically created line item will be deleted, to bring it again, don't click on process choose open item, simply. Document simulate one more time. You will get the line item one more time, click on. Post. Now I posted, technically, do I have any liability or my liability is cleared now?
Cleared. Sir, liability.
Right, before we refresh it, vendor account is representing seventy thousand outstanding negative, now we already processed. After payment, if I try to refresh my report, I should show any value or nothing should be displayed. Nothing to be displayed because there is no outstanding pending, everything is paid, I'll click on refresh. When I click on refresh, it is giving, no items are selected because nothing is outstanding. If anything is paid, it will be part of your cleared item, part of what? Open means unpaid, cleared means paid or settled. Click on this, when you look at it, you can see this, when you see it, you need to look at. One common document number called as clearing document number, what number? Clearing document number, this clearing document number will tell you. Payment document number K Z, this payment is applied against what invoices, what credit memos, you can easily find out by. Filtering clearing document number, this is what I want everybody to do today. In short, by tomorrow, once this is executed, same step without any deviation, it will be done for the customer entry. I'm not doing the customer now, just to avoid the confusion, I listed in the Excel sheet. To make sure tomorrow when you do it, same thing you will be able to do it on your own. Tomorrow I will explain the screens of customer, but I will not post the customer entry tomorrow. But before tomorrow's session, please make sure this is strictly practiced at least one time. We would have taken long time, but when you do it, it will not take more than fifteen to twenty minutes, am I correct? Once you understand these point, this will not take. Ten minutes also, within ten minute or maximum of one five fifteen minutes you can complete the whole cycle whatever we did now. But to have that, you need to have clear understanding, you have to have clear focus on what you are doing, what is expected. But at every given point of time, please make sure, write down the scenarios. Who is your vendor, what date you are purchasing, what amount you are purchasing, where are you purchasing, what is cost center, what is profit center? Everything we need to add, as you move forward, I will increase the scenarios, I will add additional point to each of the point. So that you will feel, okay, previously I did this. Screen, the way you did it, logic you applied will remain the same, I will add additional scenarios. When I say I will add additional scenarios, I will bring multiple expenses, multiple cost center, multiple. Then you will understand, okay, if this is the case, this is how system is behaving. And remember, in every interview, you will be questioned on document splitting, am I right? Yes, no? In every Fico interview, splitting is mandatory or not?
Yes sir.
Yes.
Right, in every interview, document splitting is mandatory, this is the base for your document splitting. This practice, whatever you will be doing today, is the base for your document splitting for your interview preparation, point number two. In every interview, you will be questioned about payments or not vendor payment, in short, automatic payment program.
Yes.
Yes.
This will be the base for your automatic payment, similarly, you will also be questioned about B R S. E B R S, M T nine forty, manual B R S, whatever B R S, yes or no?
Yes.
And you will also be questioned about vendor aging reports, different other points, all are. Having basic fundamental understanding in the session that you had today. If you practice it properly, these topics when you come across in future. They will become very simple, very easy for you to understand. Don't think that this is only vendor, I will create any vendor, I will create any invoice, don't think in that way, because as you move forward. I will connect every session and make sure in the coming sessions. Certain topic I will explain less, I will give more work to you to do it on your own. As I said, you will have more practical work, you'll have more assignment to do it from your end based on all this fundamental understanding. So strictly make sure you are understanding, simple scenario but make sure you are understanding it clearly. Any questions that you have, only on what we have done now, put your. Hands up, any point, any question other than this, hold on, as you move forward, I'll take your further questions. But strictly ask the questions from what we did today. To avoid confusion for those who are doing it for the first time. If you discuss other topic questions, irrelevant topic to this one, will create unnecessary confusion for those who are doing it for the first time. Praveen?
Sir, regarding a multiple expense account if we take, so how the documents?
As I said, I will do it in the coming session, I will show it practically. This is only the base, before we understand the different scenarios, this is mandatory.
Okay, sir, one more thing, I did notice you interview.
That as I said, any questions other than this, I will take separately. Because when somebody is going through the recording, it will create confusion for them. Okay, so we'll make sure, any topic we are doing a test stretch, please make sure in between, we are not getting deviated because these sessions will help you. Sit and then understand the concept in one setting, because to do it all these things, we had three, four individual sessions, am I right?
Yes.
When you refer this session, those previous sessions not necessary to refer. All right. Manikandan?
Sir, yes sir, sir, when, when the vendor account becomes zero, simultaneously the domestic account also will become zero, sir.
It will also become zero, because it is a shadow impact. Your vendor account, your accounts payable account will have the same impact at the same time.
Oh, when, when we doing the filter on those, can share the, the G L accounts? Oh, when, when we doing the filter on those, can share the, the G L accounts, on scans and.
If you look at this. Two series. I take two. This will also be zero. Okay, if I take this cleared item, it will be zero because currently I have only one vendor, I have only one scenario. When I add multiple vendor, when I add multiple scenarios, I will come to this, I will show the comparison.
Here, here we can make a filter on the vendor.
Here, you can put filter on the vendor. You have to add layout, you'll have to bring vendor, do a subtotal based on the vendor. Then you will get to know vendor wise outstanding.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
And, yes, and one more, one more thing, sir, can you double click on any one document, sir? Because the, the leading ledger, posting period is four, it will automatically in the posting to that V three. Can it, can this one check once?
If you click on general ledger view, it will happen automatically. This is your leading four. Non-leading is one automatic.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Ganesh?
Yeah, Ajay, Ajay, in today's scenarios while posting the outgoing payment, in the reference bill you have given some text, right? So, instead of that, if you have given that directly the, directly the invoice document number in the reference, the will a system post automatically instead of going and passing the process open items?
Yes, little process.
Okay, okay.
Since we have only one, I did not do it.
Okay, okay.
There are reasons why I did not do it. Those reasons I will explain in the coming sessions.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
Padmasri?
Sir, good evening, sir. Sir, can you upload this now itself, sir?
The Excel sheet. Approximately, Excel you will get it now only, recording you will get it maybe after one, one and a half hour. You'll get the recording tonight itself.
Ah, okay, sir, thank you.
Okay, yeah. Okay, all right, fine then, let me stop the recording.
Uh, sir, you uploaded one interview.